Tonight, before we begin our meeting officially, we are going to recognize the tragedies that have happened around the nation. And I think Mr. Pollan, you're going to lead us in there, please.
Yes, Mrs. Collier, thank you. So I would just ask that the Board of Education and the public pay respects to the tragedies in Buffalo and Uvalde, Texas. Obviously, the loss of life is never easy to deal with. But these recent tragedies bring to light the climate and the culture that we're faced with daily. So especially, you know, when it comes down to school-aged children and the loss of life, it reminds us of how precious our resources, in particular our children, really are. So I would just ask that we start the meeting with a moment of silence and recognize those families and their loss before we say the pledge. So at this time, I just ask everyone, please, you know, honor that wish and take a moment of silence. Thank you for that. You know, in our community, we're not immune to those threats or the risk of danger. And it's one of those things that as an educator in this day and age, I can honestly say it keeps us up at night. And for our community and our public at large, they did receive a message that there was unfortunately a comment made by one of our students that we investigated and found it to be not credible. And it was just a comment that was made in an off-the-cuff fashion. But I do want to acknowledge the Wayne County Sheriff's Office and our North Rose Wolkett administrators for how they worked in concert to prove that that was actually just a comment that was made off the cuff. And there was never a threat to anyone or any group of people here. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And with that, I'll open tonight's board meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A motion, please, to approve tonight's agenda. Tina and Jason? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. With that, we are going to be going into executive session. So I will need a motion, please, to go into executive session to discuss a specific legal matter. Motion, please. Linda and who? Jason, thank you.
Is Carrie still in the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. All in favor? Motion is carried. Mr. Pollan, how long would you say we'll be gone?
Thirty minutes.
Okay. So Tina, you can take care of that.
All right. So Carrie, if you'd like to leave and come back about 6:30, thank you. Everyone, all the public has left. I'm going to pause the recording. Carrie's trying to join, it says. I just text her to see if she was able to connect. Now she's gone.
Why don't we go ahead and get started? We'll let her back in if, when she jumps back into the fold.
Okay. We'll move on to a regular session. And Tina, is there any public access to the board tonight that was requested?
No, there is not.
Okay. We'll move on to the superintendent's update. This is out of order. But it's where it needs to be tonight. So Michael, you can take over.
I'm working on getting your slide up.
I gotta say, I think I can bring it up too. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So Tina, you're teaching me very well. So and as long as the board is patient, we're in okay shape. So thank you, Mrs. Collier, and Board of Education. I just want to go through a few things with you tonight. One that we're really excited about is presenting to you a new K through four report card at North Rose Elementary. The rationale for this is that last year, Mrs. Patterson worked tremendously hard to create UPK for four pre-K report card. You know, and as you recall, when we had our student speakers last month, you know, you could tell that the fruits of their labor down there in the three PK and the four pre-K classrooms really paying big dividends. It became very apparent to us that we've been promoting an inconsistent message to our community by having our elementary reporting out on trimesters with our middle school and high school reporting out quarterly. So the work that the school leadership team was able to take on this year was really taking a look at our current report card down there at the elementary school, figuring out whether the data was clear and coherent to all parties concerned, whether we were promoting a positive message of student progress to parents and one that was able to resolve any inconsistencies that were present. And the answer in many cases was no, in fact, we're doing the exact opposite of that. So they started to dive deep into the report card, solicited feedback from their colleagues at the elementary level, solicited feedback from the parents, and really started working hard on creating a reporting system that was simplified and aligned to standards, a new behavioral expectation that was aligned to, you know, our Cougar values as part of our strategic action plan, one that added grades to each content area, and really focused in on that tier one through the MTSS, which, as you all know, is very much about classroom instruction. And then last and most important, we needed to make sure that our report card was a tool that was parent-friendly and something that could be utilized to inform parents of the progress their children were making. And in cases where students were accelerated, explain to them how. And in cases where students needed additional support, explain why and where. So as you can see, there's a report card process and a draft in front of you. And I'll bring up an example of it at the end that started off with our instructional coaches meeting with Mrs. Graves and Mr. Dijon Batista and really starting to create that consistent platform and the approach that we wanted. Once they were able to create the alignment in terms of the actual tool and provide the group with some clarity, they shared this with the SLT members and continued to process through that. After that became clear, we rolled out an initial draft of parents to get more clarity and more input. And I'm pretty pleased with the work that that team, that they, the team at the elementary was able to put in and the product they were able to produce. And as you see on those bulleted points that I won't read to you, it accomplished what we had initially set out to do, which I think, again, was to provide a tool with clear expectations that could be utilized by our families. So I'm pleased to share with you now an example of what we're talking about. I can get this link to open. Oh. And I don't know that I am able to do that right now. Tina, are you able to pull that part up? Well, let me see if I can go back. I don't know if I'll be able to do this tonight. But the product that I was going to share with you was very similar to what we had been exposed to earlier. And I'm not sure why it's not able to pop up on my screen. But it pretty much is a consistent format across the board that references, like I said, alignment to the standards, clarity for parents, grades for content area, and then there's a behavioral expectation piece that will reference the Cougar values and also give parents input on how students are behaving.
See that here, right?
But it's not here. For some reason, when I went to hit my link, my computer said the update for my browser needed to take place.
Can you see what I'm sharing, Mike?
Hang on one second.
No. Oh, you can't see mine either?
Yes.
There it is.
Yes, that's it. So that's the work from the pre-K classroom. So if you keep scrolling down, Tina, please. You'll see the behavioral expectations and the social development that we were just talking about.
Oh, good.
And then the comments. If you keep on going, Tina.
That's as far as I can go.
There should be, if you hit the link, there should be more pages to it. If not, don't worry about it. That pretty much gives the example. And for the board and the community, developmentally, you'll start to see those skills are scaffolded from the pre-K classroom right on through fourth grade. And one of the things that I would say to you, this quarterly report card system will do will ensure that parents, they have children across multiple grade levels and in more than one building. There you go. They'll have a consistent time of year where the expectations are that if a child at the elementary school is getting a report card, they can anticipate a child at the middle school and a child at the high school will get a report card as well. You know, Tina, if you just keep scrolling down, let's grab the fourth grade ones to just show them between the primary and the intermediate level, the consistency in report card and how there might be additional depth to this platform. There you go. So as you see, there's not a lot of changes there with respect to the structure. Keep going. But in terms of like, you know, getting clarity around perseverance, relationships, inquiry, something that, again, was very important to our Strategic Action Planning Committee, that people understand that when we say we're educating the whole child, we really are speaking specifically to that. Tina, if you can exit out of that and go back to the actual PowerPoint, that would be great. So I'll take any questions about the report card at this point in time.
I don't have any questions, but seeing the previous report cards in person, this seems a lot more streamlined and concise, and to use one of the words from the bubbles. But I appreciate the thought that went into this because it is more, it's a lot easier to understand.
Thank you.
I think it's always good every so many years to revisit the report card because it forces teachers to really clarify what's important and what their aim is. Especially when you have new people who are new teachers in the system.
Michael, you said that everyone was a part of building this.
So they, what happened, Jason, was we, Christie approached Megan and myself. So she and Matt approached us with the desire to change the format. We suggested that, you know, yes, we're in favor of that as well because, again, we're promoting an inconsistent message to the community. She started working with the instructional coaches to go back and use the work that Sarah Patterson had started with last year, and they built from that. So then when they went to the SLT, got feedback from the shared decision-making group, they went back out to the colleagues at large across the grade levels and subject areas, as well as special area teachers, to continue to solicit feedback and input. So it was kind of a recursive process. So long-winded answer, but the short answer is yes.
Great. Thank you.
Can you see it now, Mr. Pollan?
Yes. Yep. Any other comments, questions, or feedback on report card?
Just a comment. I think it looks, it looks like it's age-appropriate and also a good transition from the consistency between high school and middle school grading systems versus elementary. I mean, they're not the same. They shouldn't be the same, but there is that transition there with grades.
Right. They're very much is a developmentally appropriate tool. Okay.
Just quick, I'm assuming that those, those, those points are aligned with AmesWeb?
The reading program definitely, in terms of reporting out, is that what you're asking me? Or you talk of, well, it's more aligned towards collaborative classroom and the skill sets that we would expect there. And then there's certainly a component where we would utilize AmesWeb. But developmentally and the progress that we would expect, it's, I would say, a multifaceted approach between the collaborative classroom, AmesWeb, and Hagerty.
Thank you.
Yep. So if there are no more questions, Tina, if you want to just keep advancing, stay with it. The other part that I want to just update on, with the approval of last week's Board of Education budget and the community budget that we passed, you'll recall throughout the budget season, we proposed repurposing some positions that were open. So we will be eliminating certain positions for the benefit of our school community by creating a couple of new positions. So we're not actually adding positions in terms of the number, but we are repurposing existing positions. So we will eliminate and swap out per se. So one of the things that the community voted on and approved was they were in favor of adding a social worker position to the middle school. So that's going to be in front of you in your agenda tonight. We are going to be making the recommendation of increasing our Spanish staff for a .6 position at the high school. You'll recall through Mrs. Polliotti's presentations to the board previously, the high school was the one building that did not have an equitable approach to instructional coaching. So we are going to be adding a .6 Spanish position with the expectation that that will become a 1.0 role because we have indication that our current instructional coach, who is a .6 and teaching .4 Spanish, would like to take on that full instructional coaching role. So that's why the change there, so we can get her into that position on a full-time basis to allow her to continue to grow our instructional practices at the high school and offer consistency in programming and expectation pre-K through 12. And then due to the retirement of a member of our visual arts staff, our art department, that we're going to go ahead and reduce a position by .5 because with other people shifting responsibilities, we're able to allow other people to pick up the portion of the instruction that would have otherwise been left open. So I just wanted to give you that. And then lastly, you know, I want to point out two things. Tomorrow night, we have the Ford County School Boards Association with a topic of moving public education forward. Our region's going to be lucky enough to work and hear from Commissioner Betty Rosa, Chancellor Lester Young Jr., Regent Ruth Turner, and Regent Wade Norwood. You will recall, we had Regent Norwood present to the Board of Education in our community earlier this year. So tomorrow, I believe it's the first time in several years that we've been able to be lucky enough to have both the Commissioner of Education and the Chancellor for the Board of Regents in the same area, in the Wayne Finger Lakes vicinity, in some time. So that's quite, quite impressive, and I'm looking forward to that. And then lastly, in your agenda tonight, I'm asking the board to approve a settlement, which is being provided to you based on our district council, the recommendation of our attorney to settle a construction matter with FAS Construction Group. And if you approve this settlement tonight, what that's going to do is resolve several disputes regarding credits and change order work that's still left open. The settlement's a universal resolution of all disputes between our district and FAS. So there are several of them I'll remind you of. But I think that that's something that, you know, as you proceed through the agenda tonight, I would just ask you, consider that settlement agreement, vote however you feel you need to in the best interest of our community. But I do believe that this is both a prudent and fiscally wise decision. And it certainly keeps the financial integrity of both our district and our community at large intact by agreeing to something that closes out several open items. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we move on to the consent agenda. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. Tina and Linda? Discussion. The consent agenda goes through page four in your agenda. Hearing no questions. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? All right. Motion is carried. We come now to policies. A motion, please, pardon me. A motion, please, to approve the policies at the policy recommendations listed here. Tina, a second. John? Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving? Motion is carried. Moving to number eight. This is the settlement with FAS Construction. A motion, please, to approve and authorize the settlement of claims of FAS Construction Company Incorporated. A motion. John, a second. Tina? Any discussion? All in favor?
It's a roll call.
It's a roll call.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. Thank you, Jen.
Cinda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul is absent and Izetta is absent. Thank you. Motion is carried.
Thank you. That completes our business. We move to good news. Does anyone have anything they want to share?
Well, I can't be specific, but in Facebook, there is a, every so often, there's an acknowledgement of one of our seniors, a little, a nice, very nice picture, plus a little, very short, but very accurate description of what they've done. And then they're crediting their parents or whoever for their education. So it's very nice. I'm sure they'll go through the whole class.
They, they're doing the top 10 because I've been watching them too. It's really nice to see. It really is.
I attended the high school concert last night, and I want to tell you that it was absolutely fantastic. The students were professional in their attire and their tuxes and their long black dresses. They were professional in their behavior. It was delightful to see the band members come out of the wings, take their seats, sit down. And then when Christine, the conductor, entered, they all stood as a group for her and then sat. The choirs as well processed in, walked in, but in beautiful or professional order. It was just a very well-done concert. The songs that were selected really showed what the students could do. And they were, there was a wide range in their repertoire of different kinds of songs that showed off different skills or, or abilities. It was really a fantastic time. And then the seniors were honored. And the seniors even sang a song of their own, and it was, it was a nice evening. So kudos to our students, but especially thanks and appreciate to Christine, who did an outstanding job. Linda?
I know. I made the comment. I was not able to be there because I was out of town. But a week ago Friday, they also had the musical performance of the cabaret at the high school with desserts. And I haven't heard any specific comments, but I do know everything that she has been involved with, Christine, with her students, it's been remarkable. And there were a lot of solos, I now know, and special songs that were going to be part of that cabaret.
I attended the cabaret as well, and it was, it was casual. It was a nice evening. And it was, you know, it was all solo work. And you could just tell the students were enjoying performing their songs just, and they did extremely well. All right. Under board member requests, comments, and discussion, I did want to ask, I know many of us are attending tomorrow night's meeting, the Ford County meeting that Michael mentioned earlier. If anyone is interested in writing with me or sharing a rag, give me a call or an email, and we'll arrange that. Okay? If I don't hear from anybody, I'll see you there. Anyone else have any comment? Then at this time, we, I'd like a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a specific individual. Is there a motion? Jason and John? Any discussion? All in favor? A motion is carried. To our public, we will be returning to, when we're finished with executive session, we will return to public session to adjourn, but we will not be conducting any more business tonight. So if, as you log off, don't worry that, that you'll be missing something because I promise you, we won't, you won't. So I'll say goodnight to Carrie and us and Gary.